Good evening. Tonight's meeting of the planning board is being held pursuant to legislation enacted by the governor a few months ago that permits a local governance, including the town and Newcastle Planning Board, to meet virtually so long as noted accordingly. And access is provided to the public to observe and when appropriate, participate remotely as well. Tonight's meeting has been appropriately noticed and the members of the public do have the ability to observe the planning board's meeting tonight. So tonight's meeting is in accord with the state legislation and the New York State Open Meetings law. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Nick. We'll call the meeting to order. We have a quorum. And we'll get going. Our first item this evening is a public hearing. This is for Tavo Crest LLC and Childs 14 Jeffrey Lane and 404 Whipplewell Road. This is an application for a final subdivision plat- application for a lot line amendment. Do we have a motion to open up the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. Okay. I don't think we have very much on this. I don't have very comments from the applicant. Anything that the applicant wishes to bring us up to speed on?
Only that we have brought a septic contractor out to the property to confirm the locations of the existing septic systems on 404 Whipplewell, the Childs property. And we're in the process of documenting that and we'll provide that back into the town.
Great. Okay. By the way, Peter, how is that done? How is that? What kind of mechanism or tools do they use for that?
A combination of different things, but mostly they have, with the technology today, they have almost like a camera on a scope where they can get into the piping from the septic tank once they locate that. And with a transmitter, they can follow the path that the transmitter takes as it goes through the piping. Until they hit an obstruction, then just open it up by hand, excavate it by hand.
Okay, terrific. Thanks. Any questions from board members?
Yeah, I have a minor, minor question. In the one, two, three, four, fifth, whereas we state that the house was constructed in the early seventeen hundreds. And I think-
We're not reviewing the, the resolution yet, Dick.
Oh, we're not?
No, this is the public hearing. We need to ask if there's anyone present that wishes to speak.
Okay.
But hold that thought.
We'll try to escape.
Any, any questions at all, guys? Thoughts? Sabrina, any problems, issues?
None.
I think we've really resolved everything. Pam, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this application?
No one has their hand raised at this time.
Okay. Well, not seeing any further comments or questions from the members of the public. Is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
Not yet. I'm confused. My minor, we're looking at the resolution.
Not yet.
Okay.
Well-
I have to go find another piece of paper?
No.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Can, can you? Don't we need a quorum?
We do. We have three of us.
Oh, okay.
So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So now the next item on our agenda this evening is the resolution. And again, same applicant, same property, et cetera. So we have a resolution. It's been drawn up. And Dick, I think you're raring to go. You had some questions on the resolution.
I have a tiny question. Fifth, whereas.
Right.
It says, the house, the house, it sounds like the entire house was constructed in the early seventeen hundreds. Now, that could be seventeen oh two or three. I would suggest then it was built in the seventeen hundreds. Because that, there weren't that many houses of that format in the early seventeen hundreds. I don't see the logs, you know?
We can strike early and just leave it as seventeen hundreds.
Yes.
No problem.
Okay.
Because that changes the value of the house. If it's in excellent condition, it's in seventeen hundred, has other impacts too. Anyway, that's it.
Okay, good. Anyone else? Any questions, thoughts on the resolution? Peter, are you okay with the resolution? Any problems with issues?
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
In the conditions, item number seven, there are five conditions that are listed. Are items number four and five saying the same thing? Or was the intent to provide information for lot five in one of those comments?
Hmm. Good catch. I don't understand it.
I, I think it was only referring to the one property. Because the property was shown. Here's Bob.
Isn't the septic area part of the onsite wastewater treatment system? Or are they-
I would, I would consider that to be the same thing. And that's why I was wondering if it was to differentiate between lot five and lot seven.
If Bob, if Bob agrees, I think we can strike the last bullet.
What are we talking about?
On the resolution, three of three of the resolution. There, condition number seven, the last two bullets. They're essentially saying the same thing. Did we need them, one of them to refer to the other property? The Tavo property, or is it just-
The Tavo property, we knew a good location on there.
Right.
Childs, we had a discussion where I think the applicant should make a good faith effort to locate it, just in case we know it's not an issue with where it's located. And I think that was discussed with Peter last time. And I believe you agreed to do that.
Right. And so we just need to strike that second bullet then.
That is correctness. To make a long story short, yes.
Great.
Good. Okay.
That was all.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Thank you, Bob.
All right. Anyone else, anything? If not, as amended, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Don't move.
We'll have to strike present Felicia. Kenneth's not here yet. So she can't be-
She did, and she did text me. She's unable to join this evening.
Okay. All right. So well, she has to be stripped off there on the present. She'll, she'll be absent. Is there a motion then to adopt the resolution as amended?
Well, I think, yeah, Dick, Dick made the motion.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I thank your pardon. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 No, motion's carried. Thank you very much. Good luck with it, Peter.
Thank you very much. We'll get our information back into you. I appreciate the effort. Have a good night.
Yep. Okay, the Panetti application will not be heard. It's been adjourned. So we will not hear that. So we go now to our next item, which is number four on the agenda. This is the Midas Main Street Lot Corp 90 Inningwood Road. Application for a site development plan, steep slopes and tree removal plan.
How you doing? Good evening, members of the planning board. I'm Anthony Grau. I'm representing our client, Midas Main Street Corp for 90 Inningwood Road. I'm just wondering, am I able to share my screen?
Sure.
So I can.
It usually works.
There we go. So this is the present site, 90 Inningwood Road. Part of our site is on the R2A zoning. That's the part that we're developing on and we're looking to not touch the R1A zone. Now, this was a- What's that? What was that? I thought I heard somebody say something.
I can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move this closer to my mouth. Sorry. It's the beard. Um, it's that month. So I just wanted to show, this was a project that was previously, we had approval back in July 2009. And the conditions of the resolution were never fully met and the project was abandoned. Since then, we had somebody else come in and buy it. And then ultimately, Midas Main Street Corp has bought the property. So I just kind of want to zoom in, which was previously approved. We tried to keep the house footprint as close as possible and all of the grading around the front of the project. This top one is representing what was approved back in 2007.
2007 or 2009?
2000, oh, sorry, 2009.
Okay.
Sorry, my brain's two years off. So below, this is what we are proposing now. And, and the only real changes are we pushed this wall further back. Because previously you were walking right out the door and going down, you had no room, you were going right down a hill. So we wanted to give some, some area back here, some livable area for the wall. And the only other change is we decided it was going to be quite difficult to chip the rock at this entrance location. And we were worried about traffic issues chipping from the road. So we wanted to allow an alternate path into the site with an excavator to get back and around. This way we can work the rock from the actual project site. And we're not in the road.
So the, the second entrance is really just for construction and the plan would be to abandon that after the house was constructed?
Yes. I mean, I, I would talk to the contractor. We could possibly abandon it before then. The main reason was, like I said, to get machines in there. So we're not dealing with it from the road. But yeah, this area will be fully restored to natural condition once we're out of there.
So is that already got it open from the previous work or is it just more of a natural opening there on that, at that point?
It's more of a natural opening. I don't know if you had a chance to be at the site, but this is kind of where everybody who enters the property kind of walks through here. I was just proposing a little bit of smoothing out at the entrance, just to get up in there with the excavator and then just track up the steep slope to get into the site.
What, do we have better sight lines at the construction entrance side versus the other? Or do we have any differences?
No. When this went through the process back in 2009, we looked at all the different locations and this seemed to have the best sight line for the actual main entrance itself. This would just be used to get a machine in there. We, I don't think we've used this as an in and out constantly.
Okay. But the machine issue is, is because at the other entrance, you need to be doing some chipping, right?
Yeah, this whole, this whole slope here is rock. So to get into this entrance, we're going to be, you know, rock hammering, chipping away at the rock to try to get the entrance in. And we thought it'd be better rather than having a machine out in the road all, all the time. Went up all that, while that process is being done, to bring the, the machine around to the back and work from this side, work in this way. It would be more beneficial to traffic and safety.
So does the steep slope application that we have before include the, the driveway as well as the construction road? Even though the construction road will eventually be, the plan would be to, to return it to its natural state?
Yeah, we still took that into account for our disturbances.
Okay.
So the, this, this is just showing the disturbances within the actual right of way. Which totals the total amount of disturbance, which is, I can't get to it because it's behind everybody's picture. Oh, there we are. So they, these numbers represent these included. But we just wanted to break out and show what was happening in the right of way. The other thing is previously we were trying to kind of keep all the stormwater where it is now. Reading the town engineer's memo, there are updated standards, which we will include moving forward. And as for the septic system, we do have, we still held on to the, the septic approval. So we still have approval for that, which I will supply the town with as per one of the comments that came from the town engineer. But we did keep up the approval.
Now, is the old barn knocked down?
I, I don't know of an old barn. Is there an old barn on the property?
All right.
I was in there. I never saw the old barn. I don't know. Maybe I wasn't in that area.
Yeah, somewhere over there.
Over here?
I'm not sure. I have to look up one of the old drawings.
If it helps, this is Dennis Pirelli. I, I spent a few hours on the site last week, kind of walking around and familiarizing myself. I didn't see any structures, if that helps.
Okay.
Um, what else? So I think that's it.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if I'll open it up for questions.
Well, we'll run through the comments. Sabrina, you had some comments and Dennis did and Bob did. So I guess Sabrina, if you have your comments.
Sure. And, you know, from, from a zoning conformance, from a planning perspective, you know, this project was reviewed by you in July 2009. It was approved by you. Not much has changed. You know, per the information submitted, the applicant did speak to moving the wall that's in the backyard further back to create more of a backyard. But the, the zoning conformance of the more restrictive district, the R2A zone withstands. So they are completely zoning compliant. They're not asking for any variances. They're within the coverage requirements. It is considered a type two action in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act. You know, so it really, the bigger issues for the board to address fall under both Dennis and Bob's purview. From a planning perspective, it is compliant.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Bob, do you want to run through your comments?
Ah, yes. Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Basically, I'll go through the ones I think are important. I'm not going to go through all 25. I don't want to bore everyone. They'll be sleeping when I'm done.
I was going to say that. I'm glad you did.
Yeah. ST1, obviously, as Anthony had stated, that report is a little bit outdated. So I'd highly recommend you update it with the new rainfall amounts. That's ST1. ST2, I'm looking for a whole global analysis of the whole site here, guys. You really just picked up the new impervious, but I'm looking for the difference in runoff based on the clearing of the trees. Everything within a land development activity, that's all got to be put in your TR50 modeling. And that's got to have design points because I want to make certain there's no increasing runoff coming down Inningwood Road. So you might have to change the way you do the tributary areas to pick up a lot more area. When you're doing your modeling for the stormwater, that's a big item, number two. And number three, ST2 and three. Then shoot on down to ST8. Actually, swell, concrete swelling at roadway, which runs all the way along the west side of Inningwood. I want to make certain when you put that new head wall in, guys, it's going to have the same capacity in a hundred year storm that the culvert does. You said, I don't want that water coming into the head wall and then backing up onto the road. That would be a nightmare. That's ST8. Guys, there's a lot of improvements in the right of way. I thought this was Inningwood Road Town right of way. I was brought to my attention that by town council, that this may be in fact state property. I called up the Commissioner of Public Works. We maintain that road. That doesn't mean we own the right of way. So you might want to find out who owns that right of way, because if that's the case, there's a substantial amount of work you do in the right of way, which is possibly owned by the New York State DOT. You put in a culvert, you're doing all the cut and fill, you put in the boulder wall, put in a storm scepter. You change the sideline. So you might want to check that out based on our records, based on discussions with Jennifer. And I, I believe her and she's probably right. That's probably, looks to me, it's a state right of way. In light of the fact we maintain the road. So you might do some research on that and see what you come up with.
Recall, Bob, that Jennifer looked at the tax map and that indicated the state as being the owner of that property. So that might be some information the applicant should look at to reach out when reaching out to the state.
Very good. And like I said, I, I agree with Nicholas and Jennifer. They're probably correct. I wrongly thought it was a town road, but it's a state. And they're going to be quite, you know, they'll be looking at the drainage coming off the site as well. They'll be looking at the sight lines. So they'll be looking at all the things I look at. So just make sure, as Nick said, you come back and have good proof and demonstrate to us that it is a state right of way. Also to another thing on site, the, these walls you have there, they're quite tall. I think they're sixteen, seventeen feet in height. And the cut you have along the entrance, let me focus on the entrance right now. We're assuming that's going to be all good solid rock going all the way in, you know, the station 200, 300, that might not be, that could be all friable rock. So you really have to show a good site layout and a plan. And the plan for the walls have to be not a generic cut sheet from like a company. It's going to be an actual design.
Okay, yeah, we are in the process of trying to retain a structural engineer for, for both wall locations. So yeah.
Because-
We are actively, we're having problems. I guess a lot of people are busy right now. So we are retaining a structural.
Right. But getting back to the walls on site, they're seventeen foot tall walls. It's on a steep slope embankment. You're going to have to do a global stability analysis on that. You should get, not only do you have to check the, the wall strength, you're going to make certain the surrounding areas of it upgrade, downgrade, and soils below it is going to be able to withstand that type of load in and forces. And that's a pretty substantial wall, seventeen feet.
And it has to have fencing on top of it too, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So I covered like GT, GC2, GC4. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Before we leave that, I'm just wondering if the applicant could consider, if it works, whether or not that wall, these walls can be stepped. So it's not one solid seventeen foot wall, but we work back up the hill. And so maybe it's an eight foot or a nine foot or three, six foots or whatever it might be. From the appearance, I mean, the aesthetics, I think, would be more attractive or less unattractive. And of course, Dick has raised the safety issue of that high a wall with fencing and good Lord, who knows what with kids playing, et cetera.
That's a good idea. It's up to the applicant if they can design it that way.
Yeah, I'll definitely talk to the owner and see if, you know, they'd be okay with that. I mean, you could plant those, those stepped walls as well. I just worry about a lot of room getting taken, taken over. Because it's like, I think it's double horizontal as the height. But we'll take a look at that.
Also too, I had a concern, Anthony. You, you state you want to use this entrance, this construction entrance. Those existing grades going up to where the wall starts, that's about a thirty-three, thirty-five percent grade. Are you going to be able to find equipment? That can-
Yeah, they're five footers. So yeah, five, ten, fifteen.
Yeah, it's like thirty-three percent. It's pretty steep.
Yeah.
Very steep.
Yes. So, you know, I don't know what type of equipment.
I think it's going to be a track, track machine. But again, I'd have to talk to the, the contractor and see what he planned on using.
Yeah, I mean, I thought the maximum grades were track machines. I, you know, let them know with the machine, they can probably look up the specs, pull up, you know, Caterpillar and see what those track machines can go up. But that's pretty steep.
Bob, can I, forgive me for interrupting for a second here, but on that point, the corridor, which is identified for the construction equipment to get up there. I guess it's, it's primarily just to sort of get the driveway in place so you can get the rest of the stuff up there. But if you look at the grades, in order to enter where it's indicated for this temporary driveway, there's a turn there where this equipment's actually going to be going sideways on the slope. I mean, it's, it's going to be tipping over to the left, I think. I mean, I, I'm just not sure that the drawing, just drawing some lines on, on top of the topo necessarily is what's going to happen. I, I wonder if there has, is there going to have to be some grading on that slope just to make that turn to go up the hill?
That's a good point.
So I think that we, I mean, it seems to me that'd be good to know, you know, further detail on that. And I assume somewhere in here, there's some indication of of the impact to the tree canopy. Because I know that's a wooded slope, the impact of the tree canopy to put that temporary accessway in. When you get to the top, it gets to be very, very steep. And I'm, I'm just guessing that this is, somebody just sort of maybe put this on the drawing without maybe thinking it through. It seems to me there's going to be some more impact than is shown. Sorry to interrupt, Bob.
Oh, that's fine. That gradient, you're right. You're absolutely correct, Tom. That gradient at the top is about thirty-five percent. I scaled, you know, the contour distance over the vertical rise. So it's about thirty-three, thirty-five percent, very steep. So you might want to give some thought about that, Anthony, and check with the contractor to see if that's even feasible before you start disturbing that whole area.
You could actually, you could bend this and go this way. And you'd probably be better off than this steep part here, as Tom has pointed out. So you bend it here.
I can't, I can't turn the point over, Dan.
Huh?
I can't see what you're doing.
Oh, I can see what I'm doing. If you go to the left of the existing temporary driveway, the contours are a little more gentle and you have more, it's easier to make the turns to Tom's point. And I think it would be safer if you went that way. Secondly, with this wall, it, you might want to, I wouldn't have to go that far, but you know, somewhere in between your red line and the blue line, sort of split it all the way up to four thirty-two.
Oh, who drew that? I could see that.
I put that in.
Oh, beautiful. Yeah.
Okay. If this wall is going to be this tall, I wonder whether it needs to have a, an exit here. I don't, you know, if kids are going to play there, they're going to lose the balls over the top. That's why you need a fence. But then maybe you should have a stairway so they can chase the ball before it hits the road.
That ball's gone.
They'll be in pretty good shape if they do that all the time.
Now, I have another question. This, the, the, your, the main driveway going in has a huge amount of pavement in front of the, of the garage. And I, I don't, I don't see why that's all necessary, why there couldn't be a circle in the middle that has plantings. And maybe it would be in the same, wouldn't be messed up that much.
It's more like backing up, man.
Yeah, and it, yeah, like that, maybe a little tighter, but it would allow some, potentially some water to get under it and drain that way as opposed to rushing down this, down the, the other way.
Well, on that, Dick, one of the thought I had was perhaps the cultech could be put underneath that circle, pull the cultech up away from Inningwood Road, back up, leave and not have that kind of, you know, eliminate some additional disturbance on that downslope. And if it's workable, functional, find a place for the cultech up there and disturb that area.
I guess the problem is, is when we looked at this back in the day, 2009, when we're going through that approval process, we tapped this place and found the areas we can use. So we could poke around, but I'm pretty sure, you know, this, this is a rocky area up in here.
I'm sure, I wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah. From my understanding, the people who got the original approval, the, these stormwater areas was where the stormwater basically needs to go.
But we should have made the three foot separation.
Yeah, and I think that's what kind of drove anything. That's why these are shallow units and these are the deeper units, because we have more depth here. We didn't have as much depth here. But we're going to have to redo holes with the town engineers department. Witnessing them anyway, you know, we'll take a day before, maybe we can pop a few holes, maybe see if we can find alternate areas. I'm certainly open to that.
Okay. Bob, you have other, other comments? We kind of interrupted you.
No, that's fine. That's fine. We covered a lot of good points. Thank you. I'm, I'm done with my comments. Thank you.
I wanted to talk a little bit about, ask you about, before we go to Dennis, the sight lines. Especially the, the line, sight line coming down the hill. Do we have, do we know what the prevailing speed limit is? I mean, speed, actual speed is on the road?
Well, that's why, if you notice, I asked for the eighty-fifth percentile. That's when you actually do a report and you actually go out there and you put counters out there on the road. You see what the prevailing speed limit is because the speed limit, based on vehicle and traffic laws, twenty-five. And I guarantee you, they're going faster than that, especially down that gradient. The sight line should be based on the prevailing speed, which is based eighty-fifth percentile. It might be up to thirty, thirty-two. We did that up on Whipplewell Road. And it was like, you know, ten miles quicker than the posted speed limit. So.
So I have to, if I could add in a little comment here, because I actually live on this road on a mile and a half further on. But I go down that hill every day, been doing it for thirty years. And the, it's true that people actually go quite fast on this road. You know, oftentimes in the morning when they're trying to get to work, but people who drive the road know that once you get past Inningwood Place, which is up on the right, an intersection close by, it's a cul-de-sac intersection, they know that there are no other roads, no other driveways coming into this downslope. And so- No other roads, no other driveways coming into this, uh, downslope, and so they pretty much sort of take off and go down the hill. Um, I don't know what the, I see the sightline distance drawn here. But I don't know if that actually accounts for the, for the topography and for the landscape and the.
No, you're, you hit the nail right on the head, uh, Tom, Ashdo has this calculation that you have to use. To take into town, take into account the down gradient. So when you take into account the down gradient and add it to the distance and take into account the prevailing speed. I guarantee you that's gonna be well more than two hundred feet.
I would think so.
Absolutely, so that's why it's important they look at that.
Yeah, it's, 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 you know, it's a feet of road going to the tectonic and down to one hundred, so, uh, it picks up quite a few subdivisions.
That's correct.
Anytime I've been on the, uh, coming downhill, that's, that's a very impressive hill. Very steep and, uh, seems to be quick.
I'm sure it's, you know, eight, nine, ten percent steep.
Anything else, Bob?
I am done with my comments for now, there are others in there, but they're technical. Minor items should be just corrected on the plans, thank you.
Dennis, you had some, uh, thoughts and some, uh, concerns or issues?
Uh, yes, hello, thank you, uh, Chairman. Hello, everybody. Um, yes, I'm just, starting as I always do with the, uh, the tree replacement, um. It appears the ninety of the ninety-two, in my opinion, are not including the tree of heavens, which. Um, I think in accordance to one twenty-one. Dash six J, uh, not to include those, uh, it is, is consistent with the. Um, so like the remainder of the comments on the tree replacement, uh, again, you know. Just have to do with, uh. Some of the verifying of the math of the, um. Financial contributions and then, you know, what is and is not, uh, consistent, uh, as far as the replacement plan is concerned with one twenty-one. Uh, dash six. Um, so, uh, probably, um, instead of going through it in detail, I would say, uh, a lot of this could be. Uh, ironed out in a, in another iteration, and if there's any, uh, questions or clarifications required of me. The applicant. Anthony, you're, you're, you're free to reach out and.
Yeah, as always, yeah, thank you.
Okay. Uh, since I did spend time on the site, I, uh, you know, just tried to. Sort of view it from the perspective of, you know. Your project and then looking at, you know, individual trees, which, you know, A. May have the potential to, to not be removed or B. You know, maybe in consideration of their current condition, which may be different than, you know, when you received your approval. Um, they're not listed for removal, but in consideration of their condition. And, you know, what you're looking to, to propose, uh, I don't think they're of a condition that, you know, should, should remain, because they may pose a. Uh, a hazard to, you know, either the property proper or the neighboring property, so. That was my, uh. Uh, focus for the, uh, tree preservation and protection comment. Maybe things could stay, just those few, and then those not indicated for removal that I think. Uh, should be evaluated a- as, as candidates for removal. Um, unfortunately, it did look like, um, from, from, you know, a review of the site and actually being on the site that. Some level of site prep occurred, I don't know to what degree, but you definitely see old silt fencing and old, uh. Instruction fencing, so, you know, I I can't say whether the trees have declined or not as a result of that, but. To make it easy and, you know, to be consistent, we just include all that in the replacements if you're in agreement to remove those trees. Um, I thought, just commenting on the landscape master plan, uh, again, spending the time on the site that I did, that was, uh. One, one, one element that hit me was. You know, sort of that, uh, auditory response of like, wow, you, you know, with the leaves off, you definitely hear a fair amount of the traffic and understandably. As many plans do, the focus is, you know, property lines and visual screening, but. Um, if there's, you know, if there hasn't been, uh, consideration for. Uh, you know, maybe having some sound, uh. Barrier, you know, attenuation for the actual, you know, residents and, you know, any, any outdoor areas. Um, I, I, I think that's a, that, that could be potentially a consideration, I just, you know, identified maybe some candidate areas that, uh. Could potentially provide that, so that was just, uh, just an observation while I was, uh, on site, didn't hit me reviewing the plans necessarily. And then the, the last item, uh, are those, uh, a- and you do depict those structures, uh, stone structures that are on the plan. Uh, obviously during, you know, my, my career, you know, running through the woods, through old, uh, abandoned. Uh, agriculture, you know, uh, those, those, those structures, uh, they appear. Um, they're, I wouldn't say necessarily that they're common, but, you know, they're, they're definitely not of, uh. Relatively recent, uh, construct, so. Just to be consistent with our code, uh, uh, of the star preservation, I think I believe just like a little more information on those. Since it looks like they are gonna be impacted as a result of construction and just, uh. For compliance with chapter seventy-six to see if they're of significance or not of significance, uh. You know, following an evaluation by a qualified professional, which is usually, you know, someone who does cultural and or historic resources type of work. And that pretty much does it for my comments.
Okay, very good. All right, uh, comments from board members, questions?
Well, uh, just a question, and it's a question that I, I have often, although I don't think I've asked it in a long time, um. Uh, and it's an internal question, why is this before us? Is it just because of the steep slopes?
Uh, no, it's, uh, tree clearing. Um, this is site development plan, steep slopes and tree removal. So it's, it's, uh, three things. And the reason is the, uh, former approval, uh, lapsed. That was abandoned, so, um. Obviously, they're using a lot of the information they had from, uh, once before, so they're not exactly starting from, uh, ground zero, but. And they're, they're leveraging that, that past information, I think, uh, uh, to their advantage. But it has to go through as, as another approval. And now since that time, uh, Bob, Sabrina and Dennis, and, and Nick can probably update you on this, but. Uh, it's my understanding that, uh, certainly at least on the stormwater side, there have been changes in rules and, and guidance. I believe the steep slopes tree and wetlands and, and those sorts of things, I don't think they've changed since two thousand nine.
The tree has.
The tree has.
Yeah, some of the calculations that I realized when we got the memo did.
Okay. So again, so it's, it's, it's the new application, uh, we understand that it wasn't approved once before, but. We now have to meet the, the new guidelines, or they have to meet the new guidelines.
That's right, the fact that it was previously approved means that the board, well, has to observe and recognize that prior proof was not bound by it. And needs to investigate whether there's been a change in circumstances. Including the area around the project as well as the chairman mentioned relevant, uh, local code provisions. And so that only needs to be discussed as part of this project. Thanks, Nick, um, you know, plus what's being proposed isn't identical to what was originally approved, most notably this second entrance, which, uh, affects the. The steep slopes, uh, even more.
Yeah, correct, right, good point. Yep.
Probably gonna, if they, when that's, when this area that just just circled. Uh, down the street is used, you may need flagmen to. To be there to make sure that people speeding down the road don't. End up being part of a, uh, you know, big backhoe or.
Absolutely, absolutely, I agree.
You know, I think also, and, and this is really probably for Bob. Um. Yeah, that's a good point, Dick, and I think what we probably would want to have is for the W P A people as well as, uh, public works people, excuse me. And, and Bob's department is maybe, uh, scheduled when you're going to do this, so we actually have a construction schedule. So the town is, uh, has some, uh, heads up in terms of what you're gonna be doing for flagging. Uh, whether we need some police out there, and of course, if it's gonna, uh, take place during the winter months. Uh, this road, uh, tends to become a, you know, a ski run during the winter. So, uh, we really have to be careful about, uh, the timing and how, what the sequence is gonna be. Nothing insurmountable, it's just, uh, just that we have the information.
I, I have a little bit of work to do, uh, if it was in winter, that, that'd be really good.
Well, I was thinking twenty-two, but you know, whatever. Good, all right, so, uh, any other questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, I have a couple of thing.
Sure.
A couple of things, um. First of all, uh, for the driveway cut and the cut to, to sort of create the pad for the house and the, uh. And the turnaround. Uh, area in front of it, um. I know that when you get this deep into the ground around here, sometimes even in rock, you can, you can find water. And I'm wondering, uh, if there's any evidence of that, uh, here. And if so, um, what would be the provisions for any groundwater that's seeping out of the side of that? Of that cut you've made to keep it from, uh, would it be some sort of a nuisance on the road or is the drainage adequate to handle it? Is there any thought on that? Any, any evidence of that?
Any, anything that bleeds out of this hillside comes across the driveway, we created this swell with, with, uh. The catch bases that catch it. Comes down the swell and gets into this catch basin, so anything bleeding out of the hill will go across the road to the grass swell and get into these drainage structures.
Okay.
Um, downhill, this will all, most of this is fill. This is being filled over the existing.
Yeah. I, go ahead, sorry.
When, when we did our deep tests, uh, I, I, I'd have to recheck, but my, my recollection, recollection is the, the, the things we're hitting was rock, not water. But we'll have to do deep tests again. So I'll definitely keep an eye on that.
And so the, the. Uh, the, the driveway cut, um, especially at the, uh, with the road itself. Uh, obviously it gets steeper and steeper as it gets to the road, because the road is, is, the driveway is fall, is falling to meet the road. Um, and then all those. Topo lines in your grading plan are just, they're just not resolved, right? And that's because, I assume that's because you expect all that to be rock, so there's no point in. Drawing, uh, contour lines where you, you know, they're gonna essentially resolve themselves when you do the cut anyway.
Yeah.
But I, I, I'm a little bit concerned, I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, what results from that. There's no way to predict it. Um, but does that mean that we have no way to? Uh, to control it, no way to, uh, mitigate what might, uh, be a problem for the neighborhood? If, uh, this, uh, if this grading plan stands, uh, I, I'd assume Bob and the. Uh, Bob Cioli, in the, the construction of all this, there are eyes on this kind of a thing. So, uh, am I right in assuming that? You know, it's gonna be handled, uh, handled in a, in a way which is sort of compatible?
Well, I think it's a good point, Tom, I mean, if there's any subsurface water they hit through a construction, you know, they might want to put some sort of. Plan Bs on here to see what we can do, so we're not scratching our head in the middle of it. So that's a good point, uh, Anthony, you might want to show some sort of provisions if you hit substantial groundwater. On what you plan on doing with it, where you plan to direct it, and how it's not gonna impact Anywood Road.
Well, my, my discussion was, was, uh, at this point, really more focused on what the topography is gonna look like when you get done with the cut. I mean, the drawing right now, was I mistaken?
Bring up some sections.
Maybe I'm mistaken, but. I guess this is all gonna be done in the state right away, like, uh, as, as Bob was saying.
The, uh.
Yeah, I would think that the state, uh, would be very much interested in what's going on here.
Absolutely. That's why it's important they find out if it has to go through the state. They'll have to get a highway work from it and any work in the state right away, including the cut, including the plantings, including the stormwater, the head wall. Emergency acts, the access for the construction, uh, they're gonna be looking at that quite closely.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, and it'd be good to, uh, once they, they take a look at it. Uh, to, to hear back from them before we approve this, so we know what's actually gonna happen. If that's, if that's, uh, possible, that sequence of events is possible, I think, I think it would be desirable anyway. I, uh, and then I have a, a larger comment, um. Which is that if, if you look at the house, and this is not a comment on whether it's a nice house or, or whether it's a handsome house or a well-designed house. This has really nothing to do with the architecture. Or the, you know, the, the, the thought behind the house itself. But this is a house that could actually, is designed to go on a flat piece of property. I mean, it's just, this, the, we already have houses like this in the neighborhood, have been put in. Uh, recently, and they're very handsome and they're very nice and they're on flat pieces of property. And there is, it, it's, it, it's a continuing source of frustration to me that. Uh, we don't have, and this is maybe a conversation among the board more than it is, uh, for the applicant to take into advisement. Because this is already going so far down the road here, I don't know if there's a way to turn it around reasonably. But it just seems to me that when you have a steep slope like this, you design a house and a floor plan. For the property. One shouldn't come in and take the machinery that's available to us. And, uh, cut into these slopes and completely transform the site in order to put a, a, a house like this. Uh, on this piece of property, because you can see what's having to happen here in order to get that done, there are plenty of ways to design a house that sort of work with the slope and into the slope. Um, which are perfectly handsome, perfectly, uh, livable and desirable homes. There is this, um, this, this. This, uh, habit. In the housing development industry to take, uh, you know, these essentially, uh, developer sort of homes, which are. Really pretty much pattern books of homes that are replicated in, in many, many different areas, and there are many versions of it, but it's essentially sort of a. A home that belongs on two or three story bed, uh, uh, home that belongs on a, on a flat site. And then just to, to sort of take it to a site like this and say, okay, let's make this fit. Um, I think it's really unfortunate. And I don't, I'm not, I mean. You know, you know, I, I'm, I don't know what, what we have in our toolbox to do something about that, I don't think we have anything now in our toolbox to do something like that. To do something about that, but it's, it's really unfortunate and. You, you come to the point where you begin to ask, well, if we do have the authority to deal with steep slopes and trees and so on and so forth. Do we have the authority to say, you know what, you got, you, this house doesn't belong here because of the impacts that, that the house, uh. That the, the house, house type, um. Uh, creates on the site. Uh, we're probably not there on this, on this application, but I, I think it might be subject for, a subject for some, some real thought.
So, Tom, uh. If I may, I, I think your point is, is a really, really good one, it, it gets a little bit at sort of, um, my question is, why is this before us and what's within our purview? Um, what question is being asked of us or what questions are being asked of us? Um, and I, you know, I don't like to go where we don't belong, but I do like to think deeply where, where, where we do belong. And certainly steep slopes is, uh. One of the areas where we do belong here, which is why I was just confirming that issue, and I think your point is really interesting, uh, something that to consider. Globally, but, uh, you know, on this site too, I mean, it. You're right that it was probably too far down the line to, to adjust the design of this home, but we can ask the question, is there a way to mitigate some of the. Disturbance of the steep slopes, uh, more? And, um, and, and maybe there is, maybe there is an answer to that question.
Well, I did have the thought that, um. I mean, rule number one is you don't build transverse to the slope, you build with the slope. And this house is transverse slope, and in order to get the house in there. And this large turnaround area for the car in there, you end up with, I think, many of the impacts that we're looking at. Uh, here on this, I mean, you know, one of the options might be to say, well, gee, what if we. You know, what if we rotate this house forty of, uh, ninety degrees and, you know, see what you get out of it. Uh, tho- those are sorts of things that. In the very beginning and sitting down and, and doing a, a site plan for, for a house, uh, especially on this kind of property. You look at, maybe that's been looked at and it didn't work, but I can see how it might work. Um, but I, you know, again, I, I actually think that this, that the site is so steep. And has so little area, flat area. That, you know, you almost wonder, you know, is it really a build of the site to begin with, especially what you have to go through in order to, to get up to the. Get up to, uh, the, where the building pad is indicated here. But I don't think we can do anything about that because it's a. I mean, it's a, it's a subdivided tax lot, I think that, uh, person has a right to develop their property. I just wish that we had more tools to, in our toolbox to. To, uh, shape these things, uh, a little bit, you know, a little bit better, that's all.
Anthony, can you put on the, uh, the steep slopes map, you know, that shows the, the different kinds of, uh, slopes?
Yeah. This is the existing, yeah, no problem.
Right, right, right. So the darker colors refer to the, you know, extreme sleep steep, right? Over thirty-five percent?
Yes.
So, I mean, to Tom and and Eldad's point, you know, we actually do have that authority whenever we have one of these environmental permits. You know, the, you know, I I can't speak to the architecture, but certainly one of the first things that we should be looking at is avoidance of impacts. And to the extent that a different pad, I mean, the style doesn't matter to us, but a different pad, a different direction can reduce those impacts, avoid some of them. I I think that is something that we could and should look at. I I'm, you know, we're not in the business of playing, you know, the house site and and the architecture. But if we say, look, this the way this is set up is we could do it differently to avoid some of these slopes.
Do you have a map of just the the site with the steep slopes and not the house on it?
Yes, thank you. I didn't see a topographic, I didn't see a survey in my package anyway.
I don't think I have just by itself.
Because the the land has been changed around that driveway and the house pad, you know, as you were layering it, you can see.
Yep.
I'm gonna, I can open up the originals, the survey I have, but it doesn't have steep slopes on it, but if it helps, yeah. Would that help you if I open the
Do we know why this wasn't built after the two thousand nine approvals?
My understanding is bankruptcy.
Yes.
Yeah, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we're not good years.
This might be it.
Well, we're looking for that. You know, it it's it's architecture, the architecture of this building, the planning of this building is not helping solve the problem. The planning of the building is actually causing a problem that they're then asking engineering to fix. Which is the grading of the site and all these retaining walls.
You can see that, okay, everyone?
Can you move it a little bit to the left? So we can get Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
You gotta build on the top.
So you're taking that knoll off at four seventy-one?
Absolutely.
And pushing the dirt against a retaining wall, which is going to be down slope in order to fill for the backyard.
We're using a rock for the retaining.
That's William DeVore. He's the client with Midas who just spoke. Yeah, so we're going to use all the rock from the the rock removal as well to fill that area.
Trying to work contours the best we can.
Well, yeah, for a for the house you decided to put on it, I understand that.
And we went into this thinking, oh, they approved this, let's not touch the layout. We were trying to hold it as close as possible, which was approved.
That's fair.
Yeah.
The driveway itself goes in quite a quite a bit to where the house is built. Going to be built. Is it possible to move the house closer to Inningwood? Out to the, I guess, what is that, the north? So that the driveway is not quite as long? Does that help us? And then you stay off the knoll and move, I think it's to the north.
This is my setback right here. Oh, it's gonna draw it.
Oh, sorry.
I realize it's it's probably tough to see. Here's the here's the front yard setback. And then this is the rear yard setback.
Yeah, it won't be so zoning conformant.
Yeah, there's there's your setbacks right there.
And that's the R two A setbacks, right?
Yeah, we went to the more stringent setback.
The code requires you to go to the more stringent.
Sure, sure. Okay.
So Bob, that's the sum of my comments.
Yep. Okay. Well.
Yeah, speaking to Tom's point and also looking at the setbacks. What happens if the building is rotated ninety degrees? And is that been looked at? You know, move it so that the the nice flat driveway bump holds the house?
Talking about something like in here.
Yeah, there you go. You can move it around a little bit to and then you can have the
I think what the what the board is saying, Anthony, is that you should probably look at reducing the impacts to steep slopes. And if it means rotating the building or rekind of designing the site, then that's what you should look at so that the board can determine whether or not the the impacts to the slopes have been lessened.
You know, it might be helpful too, Sabrina, to have the planning board see what the impacts were on the last approval to see what it'll look like to give a better idea how to move forward with this, but that would be helpful for them to see, I believe, just a recommendation.
I didn't I didn't work on the original project, but you working on the actual plans, there was a lot of different driveways shown. Alternate, there's probably five alternates until it finally ended up where it is.
I think, Anthony, so because, you know, in in prior to the approval in nineteen ninety, there may have been several iterations of the layout of the house and the driveway and so on and so forth. So I don't know if you have the ability to pull through the files and kind of look at that, but at this point, I think the board is saying to you because you're dealing with a steep slopes permit and the intention here is to lessen the impact to those steep slopes, you should try and come up with some alternatives that are less impactful to those steep slopes while still maintaining your zoning compliance.
And also too, they should demonstrate that maybe what they're doing now with impacts of less than what they originally approved years ago to see what they're doing. I mean, if
To be quite honest with you, I think, Bob, with the changes with the construction entrance and and the expanding the backyard, the impacts are probably a little bit greater.
Maybe now than before, of course, but the planning board should see that, though. To make a better informed decision on what to do.
You know, one of the, yeah, that would all be great, but I'm guessing that one of the things that we're going to find right away is, which happens too often, is that the turning movements of a car at the top of this, top of this hill are going to govern a lot more you know, cleared area grading than you'd otherwise need. This is showing a large turn at turnaround area in front of the car. What could maybe resort to a hammerhead and see what that saves? But, you know, I'm just I'm just fiddling around here at my table. And I think it'd be great to see if what it would look like rotated and see if there's anything significant that could be gained from that. My suspicion that is not. I do, I am a little bit concerned about this. What is it, a fourteen foot high retaining wall? It looks the top of a wall, four thirty-four? Retaining wall, yeah, down in there.
No, it's sixteen feet.
At sixteen seventeen feet.
That's a, that is, that's a monster.
It doesn't include the footing, so it's going to be twenty foot total height.
Yeah, there's a there's a lot of, there's a lot of construction dollars right there. So in in addition to impacts and so on. And I don't know what that's going to look like. I'd have to get back, you know, next time I go down the hill, take a look, but you know, I don't know what that's going to look like down from the road. I don't know what you'd see from down on the road. But if there's a way to minimize that and still get enough of a yard to make it a house that I guess is, you can sell, if this is a spec house that you can sell, you know, maybe there's a way to do that.
Well, echoing Sabrina's thoughts, I I I agree to the extent that we can avoid some of the extreme steep slope impacts, I think that would be an improvement. And then keeping within all the, you know, the new stormwater regs. I think moving the house in this direction and further closer to the the setback lines is probably going to save some impacts to trees as well and might actually produce more of a yard there in the back where the knoll is. And might help. But and then, of course, we had, you know, the other concerns that we talked about. I one of the, I I remain very concerned about these sightlines on this road. This is the that's that's a real, that's a real concern. So we really need to
Okay, so one last small thought. Dennis, what do you think about breaking up the scene of this tall wall? You know, from the road, from people driving by with shrubs or something along it. Yeah, so that the wall is broken up a bit.
Almost like a, yeah, like like an alternating pattern almost of
Something, I mean, something that it not just looks like a seventeen wall that somebody's going to build another house on.
No, I mean, right, it's, you know, it doesn't look like the top of a castle. I I know what you're saying.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, I was going towards it. You know, if you could get a two for one, if you want to call it that, I thought that if that was going to stay. I thought the potential existed for a candidate site to put in some of the the auditory screen type of planting that I was thinking about, but it definitely could serve that that purpose as well.
Okay, good. And it doesn't have, maybe it just the screening of the of the wall would be the lower, there's three sections of the wall. And the first one is more parallel to the the road, and then the second one is somewhat parallel. So like you suggested perhaps that, well, hey, you'd space it out a little bit differently as you moved along. And the upper, you know, north, south piece of the wall could just probably be left the way it is. Unless, of course, it creates a visual problem to any neighboring house to the west. To that end, we we usually want to see where the neighboring houses are on a on a bigger just, you know, just so we could see where they are. And then maybe some photographs could be taken from the key points on this property towards the other houses to get a sense of you know, what the view shed would be for them versus the people that would live in this house. So photos would be nice.
Tom, is there a place that's safe to park here if we wanted to go to do a site visit?
Yeah, it's okay. If you stay, if you stay on the, actually, there's not much of a shoulder, but if you stay on the on the uphill side, on the right-hand side, park there, at least people can see you around the curve. Might be worth it. Everybody bring their hiking equipment, though. We're going to need to rappel up and down the slope because it's
We have to designate a Sherpa guide.
So what I, another thing that that sort of I'm looking at in this plan is that first, i- if you, I don't understand, I guess, why the yard is putting a location on a, the rear yard is put in a location where there's a very, very steep slope. Now, maybe it's because you have all this dirt and you need to put it somewhere. But I I guess I'm wondering why the yard isn't to the south of the driveway. To below it.
Over here.
Right there.
Oh, we have a walkout.
Not there, sorry. To the right of there, to the right of the drive, the driveway there, in there, that whole area between like where the coltex are in the house. It's relatively flat there. I mean, that's why the coltex are there. Why isn't that the yard? You don't have to build a retaining wall because that's at like four fifty.
We we have a walkout basement, so we're trying to give them a little area as the walkout basement, looking out to a little lawn area.
Yeah, well. But I mean, that's a, that's a, it's a huge impact to to build that fifteen, sixteen foot retaining wall and fill it when you could put a yard elsewhere. So you give, you you lose the walkout basement, right? I mean, it's just, it's just bad site design. I'm sorry, I hate to be this way, but this is poor site design. This is not the way I think that this property ought to be used. You have flare flat area, use the flat area for the purposes you need. Flat area. And and don't go to engineering heroics in order to to do something which really maybe doesn't need to be done. And if you rotate the building, you've got a front yard to play in instead of a backyard.
So Anthony, obviously, there's some work to be done here. We have, you know, specific questions and issues that you have to get back to Bob on, but in addition, I guess, you know, you can deal with Bob and Dennis on their issues. But again, if you would, I I hope we're giving you enough direction that is understandable that we haven't mucked it up. But again, something probably closer to the north, a rotation, avoidance of the slopes wherever, I mean, I guess that's the theme of tonight. What can we do to avoid these extreme slopes that we we that you guys unfortunately are constrained by to to make this more acceptable and better? And frankly, more usable for you guys. So I guess I I guess that's the charge we'll we'll leave you with time around. Yeah, are there any questions, Anthony? I mean,
No, it's a lot to take in, you know, it's, you know, looking at redesigning it.
Then Anthony, you just have to think about reducing the impact to the slopes as much as possible.
You know, another, guys, another thing you might want to think about, Anthony, if you want to reduce the impacts to the steep slope and keep a lot more trees up. You might want to put some retaining walls along here. And go step them. And you might have to go back, you might have to go back, you might not have to go back as far to pick up that grade. You might be able to save all these trees. And you eliminate the impacts to the steep slopes up here as well.
That's a good idea.
Okay, so give it some thought. If, you know, Bob and I and Dennis are available to speak with you.
Yeah, I'll have to speak to the client too about it, you know.
Exactly, and
Time being spent on it, yeah.
We can put you back on when you when you have more information for us.
Okay. Very good. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yep, have a great holiday.
For listening and being cooperative.
Okay, our next item is a request for an extension of time. This is on the Chappaqua Central School District. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision flat, steep slope permit, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan approval. Button Hook Road and Sabina Road. We last heard this in September. So obviously, we have also received a good deal of correspondence from members of the public about some additional information that was not considered during the preliminary application stage. This is not the time that we will consider that, but all of that information's in the file and the applicant will be directed to review that information and come back to us and we will have to make a determination as to whether or not it is significant enough that we need to relook at this this application. I mean, I'm I'm trying to replicate the words, the guidance that Jennifer Gray gave me. Probably not doing it well, but Nick, you can now correct me for all my mistakes in in what I've portrayed there, but I think that's really the thrust of it.
I think, I think Bob, Jennifer said she was going to provide some guidance in the memo to the board and should be doing that later this week. I think that will provide some direction if we then need to reach out to the applicant and have them do anything, Jennifer can do so.
Okay. Great. So anyway, I mean, we are noting, we have the information, we have the correspondence, we've received it. It's in file. It's been, my understanding, it has been sent to the applicant for consideration by their folks. And will be considered when the, when we finally look at final. But this is just an extension on preliminary at this point. So Sabrina, Bob, Dennis, are there any issues concerning preliminary where we are at this point for an extension?
No.
No.
Yes, is there a motion to uh grant the extension that has been sought by the applicant?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, motion's carried. The next item on our agenda this evening is the minutes of uh January five. Rather than take the time, I foolishly had a couple of very minor things that I can just email to you, I mean, I mean, not material, uh, just word smithing and some grammatical issues. Does anyone have anything that's uh material uh that we need to discuss? Otherwise, you have uh some, you know, wood smithing, we can send that off to Felicia and the next day or so, so she can finalize these and get them done. Are there any questions or problems on any of these? So, uh, as they will be amended uh with minor corrections, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of January five?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Um, and the last thing I wanted to uh quickly, um, um, I, I think I sent that on note the other day, and that, and thrust that note was really just to have people think about this um and think of other areas, you know, we have been uh, over the years, there's no change. Um, people walk away from the process, you know, often shaking their heads, and that they don't understand the process, they just, all they understand is it takes a long time, it's very expensive. Uh, members of the public sometimes don't understand why they can't speak when we are meeting and, and, you know, what the format is, et cetera. So that was the reason why I decided to send that thought, that, that memo out just for people to consider, uh, legal staff, et cetera. Uh, on this particular uh notion, Jennifer did write back and say, if we were so inclined, and the town board liked it, and staff liked it, this is something that could be done without having to adopt uh legislation. So that's interesting, the, the note, Jennifer has written to me since, and she's indicated that uh she also has some other ideas, I'm sure other people have other ideas, staff has got some ideas, so what I think we should do is uh, I don't want to get into a long discussion on this, but basically say, look, the next time that we meet, which will be, what, December seventh? Um, why don't we put this on the agenda and have it for a discussion item, and, and in the interim, we'll have information from Jennifer and perhaps others uh who want to weigh in to try to expedite uh at least some, some aspects of these, of the process. I, I think tonight, for, for example, we had a public hearing on that lot line application, which took all of, you know, three minutes. Uh, the applicant had to come back, you know, for that, have his people here. Uh, really, we were done with it last time we met, and if we had just gone straight to public, it would have been probably something that was done, and maybe there's even another way of handling that. Uh, we have another application that we have one that we have taken a good deal of time on, and I think uh last time, that spa over on the um, I can't recall the exact name of, of the, the road, but um we concluded that, I think we're, we're, we're at a position where we're set, but now, you know, the applicant has to come back again, and we have to meet again and discuss uh in public uh what's going on, whereas if we had been in public, uh, we could have probably concluded at least one meeting earlier. Uh, those are just two examples that jump out, um, and, and I think we also have an example tonight with Midas where we would not want to go to public right away, where we really need additional information. And I think uh our staff has done a great job in putting together applications, frankly polishing them up, dealing with the applicants, giving them good direction, uh, so that by the time we see these, uh, they're in pretty darn good shape. And then when there are complicated ones like this one this evening, uh, you know, staff tells us about that, and, and very often, you know, there's some issues that we really have to get involved with, with the applicant to try to find out a, a solution, so there would be inappropriate probably to start out with public. But again, the discretion of staff to help us and to guide us, I think, is uh something we can reasonably rely on, I, I think they do a fantastic job for us. So, uh, and, and getting these things ready for us. Uh, you know, this is very different from what we did fifteen years ago, when we first started having these meetings, and people were, were reluctant to come in and even have the meetings. Um, and, uh, you know, we'd start with the informal process, and it was just the initial thoughts. So I, I think we're in much better shape, and I think this could really help the process. Um, and, and perhaps, uh, we can look at the other things as well to, to improve this. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to guess up to like a, a one Yelp as opposed to zero.
I, I think that it has merit, uh, but as you pointed out, the, uh, this is a type-two project that we just talked about. And I think rightly so, that would not make it, you know, through without some, some meetings before. And I think this was a good set of meetings, and, and what strikes me is it's it has to be, there have to be some criteria for, you know, closeness to a wetland buffer uh that we would have, so like if it's, somebody wants to uh build a, a building in the wetland setback because they, they, um, they have, I don't know, what in their mind, that might be a trigger. It might be a trigger if, uh, you know, there are X amount of trees that have to come down per acre. You know, and, um, you know, that, uh, that might be a trigger, particularly uh, want to avoid taking down uh really, really old trees. Um, steep slopes like we had tonight, if there's more than X percent uh steep slope on a particular property, um, you know, that might trigger that we, that we get involved. But others where the land is flat and dry and has already, uh, you know, it was a field for a long time, so it has few trees, that would be perfect.
Well, again, I, I agree with you, but I, again, I think, you know, between Sabrina and Bob and Dennis and Tom, these guys, you know, know this and, and can, you know, with their discretion, uh, make a recommendation to us, and I, and I think uh we would find that the, their recommendations would be right on target. And I, again, I mean, I had conversations with Bob and Dennis on the application we saw tonight, and you know, they had concerns about it and, and significant, and Bob wasn't sure whether, you know, he and Sabrina would be back from the town board this evening, so just wanted to make sure that we knew what those were. So that's, you know, the, our professionals do a, a really good professional job for us, I think. And uh giving them that discretion to send us in one direction versus another is, I think, would be very helpful, and to the extent that we can expedite the easy ones and not drag people back for an extra month, six weeks, whatever it is in terms of time delay, and then also have their all their professionals come for a public hearing that uh is really then a formality at that point, uh, I, I'd love to see if we can try to figure that out.
Uh, Bob, I think it's a good, uh, an excellent suggestion, um. I mean, there's no reason to go through Olympic trials when you're just running a three-legged race. But I do think that, um, I, I, I do think that we need to be careful about this. One of the things that I find difficult about the process that we do use is that because we um s- say that, and we require that the applications be complete um with respect to engineering and um i- i- and, you know, planning and zoning, uh, at least with respect to, you know, Tom DePaul's review of all these things to decide, you know, in which channel they go and when they go there. I think, you know, that's, that's great, uh, but we end up with things on our table which are so far advanced. And so much has been put into them with, you know, in time and money in preparing those documents that uh, people get upset when we say, well, wait a minute, you know, maybe there's a better way to do this. And they walk away and say, you know, why did they, you know, what, what's going on here? What's happening here?
That's, that's a good point, that's another, yep.
And so, you know, I've always been a fan of people coming in with a, a sketch plan, you know, get, get a survey, come in with a sketch plan. You know, just sketch some things up, tell us essentially where things are gonna go. And, you know, then go prepare your documents, rather than preparing your documents to the point where you come, and then, and then we have to un, we have to ask you to undo certain things uh and go through, you know, the hoops many times. So advancing it to public, I'm not sure that advancing it to public is necessarily it would, it would formally remove one step, but it wouldn't necessarily in, I don't know in how many cases it would remove another meeting, because we still, where we see something that we think is a problem, I think we're still going to, you know, say something about that. Uh, but for the three-legged races, you know, I completely agree, you know, you know, where the pools on the side of a house are, you know, pool additions, lot line changes, you know, there's a whole category of things, but I think we could, we could put in that bucket and move forward with real confidence that we're not gonna disappoint people, and they come, come to the planning board and have to say, gee, you got it wrong. And when you say, gee, you got it wrong, in a way, we're saying, gee, you know, the town got it wrong, because we let you down this, you know, this pathway of saying, okay, you're ready to go. Uh, and that's, I'm not saying that there's anybody here's at fault, it's just a consequence of the way, you know, people see things.
Great.
Good, I think, I think one category of things that would be easy to do would be all accessory apartments. A lot of them come to us, and I don't see the need for it.
Well, ho- hold on. We, I mean, we're talking about talking about this, right? I mean, we are not actually I'm saying, but, 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 uh, uh, Bob, your suggestion was to, to I, I mean, I think this does require, uh, you know, I really like, I think the goal is very admirable. Um, I think there's some nuance that, that needs to be thought through, um, and, but Bob, you're talking about talking, having this formally on the agenda for our next meeting, is that right?
Yes, well, we'll have much more information, because uh, I know for a fact that Jennifer's gonna, going to supply us with some information in a memo. So we'll have much more to, to, to work with than just, just my little note here.
And, and we need to notice it on your agenda.
Right, uh, so, you know, just in the interest of you know, time here, um, you know, we, we're really I, I don't want to get too deep into this discussion now before we're, we're not even really officially having this discussion, right?
No, it's, it's, it's just a discussion item that, uh, that we can have as a board, I mean, this is not involving an application. It's not involving any kind of conclusion, et cetera, it's not involving an applicant.
It's noticed to give some thought for a future agenda item where you guys can have a discussion about it.
Right, right, so I, I want to make sure that, eh, you saw it, and, and if there were any I mean, again, I think so far the comments that I've heard from Tom and Dick and, and yourself are, are, are very, very good, very important, and we haven't heard from staff on this, and we haven't really heard from Jennifer, so I, I think we're gonna have a good, uh, I'm, I'm trying to make it so exciting that we're gonna be uh really looking forward to the next meeting where we get to talk about this in some detail. But, um, I, I, I truly think this is, this is really important, um, you know, I joke around a little bit, but, you know, there are a lot of people who are very disappointed go away very disappointed with our process. And um sometimes it's uh, it's, it's the architecture of the, the process itself. Um, very often, it's just because that's the way it is, uh, when people go away unhappy, a little bit unhappy, maybe that's, it's okay. But, um, it's, it's, um, that's another issue. But this is just an administrative issue to try and see if we can come up with ideas, uh, and, and I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm sure that uh Bob and Sabrina and Dennis will have some thoughts as well, and I think this will be uh very helpful. But again, that's, that's in the future, so that would be the December uh seventh meeting, and we can, we can really tear into it, and we'll have more information. So we'll, we'll table it from there.
Got it, I'm looking forward to it.
No, seriously, I, I.
I'm being serious too.
I know you are, I know you are. I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Wait, is that, that gonna be at the December seventh meeting? I'll be there. I'll be there.
You sound a little too eager, didn't you, Nick?
He did. Just fact checking.
Uh, and then I, I just, we have one other quick thing, I, I, I know Tom finished his, uh, he looked at that traffic thing, and by the way, if you haven't noticed, it became in Mount Pleasant is to become a, uh, a, a matter of, uh, some concern. Interestingly enough, I mean, anyone who didn't think this would be the case probably is living under a rock, but as it turns out the occupant of that Mount Pleasant distribution center is gonna be Amazon, huh, imagine that. Shocking, uh, in any event, uh, there's apparently some upheaval down in Mount Pleasant over the approval. Uh, it's not to say it's gonna be redone, et cetera, but I know the supervisor down there is uh getting a lot of heat, and they're relooking at that intersection, and uh, you know, I, I, Tom and I had a discussion about the traffic uh sort of report. And uh, but in any event, uh, one of the thoughts that Tom had was that we, we send this, uh, send a note over to them and just say, look, as long as you're looking at this, if you can keep us in mind, it'd be great, so Tom, I'll let you uh talk better and more eloquently than I did.
Yeah, uh, I did go through it, and I, I finally decided, once I got deep into the, into the, the traffic signal warrants, that maybe I was uh too far into the weeds uh and backed out again. Um, I did, uh, what's pretty clear is that the traffic study that was done, was done um quite naturally, primarily for the purposes of how to get traffic in and out of the, uh, out of the site. And so they were focused, the, the study was focused on those intersections. And there just isn't any information whatsoever other than trips north, trip south. Uh, what happens beyond those intersections, it just says, you know, seventy-one vans going north, or, you know, hundred and twenty going south, whatever, whatever the numbers might be. It is, uh, yeah, I don't know if any, if you have looked at, at it, but it's uh interesting that apparently Amazon does give their drivers, and they do have hours which are sort of, they, the drivers usually do ten-hour shifts apparently, and they do shifts of four days a week, uh, forty-hour weeks, and so the, the times in the day that they are showing uh these vans leaving are mid-morning, early, uh, like between ten and eleven in there, and coming back between eight and nine o'clock at night, seven and eight, nine o'clock at night, which seems to be uh the way uh this tenant is going to operate. So what's convenient to them, and probably maybe the wisdom and all that, is that they miss the, uh, they miss the, the local sort of rush hours on, on our roads, which is good for us, I think. Um, I did notice that, um, if you add up the number of cars on site at any given time every day, there are upwards of a four hundred and fifty cars parked on site. And if you look at the property, it occurs to me that there's just no room to do all that, so they're probably, they are digging down in order to build it. So it may be that they are parking somewhere, most of those cars somewhere in the building, I know that the.
If I may, I, listen, I need to be process police here, okay? This project is not before the planning board, I have been advised by council that the planning board does not have any authority in this matter. If this project is being reinvigorated in Mount Pleasant, and you wish the town to be more involved, then I would recommend either this board send a memo to the town board so they can forward it to the town of Mount Pleasant, because it falls within the town board's jurisdiction, or Tom, as a, as a resident on that side of town, you can go speak to the town board. The, I, I have, I am, I have been contacted by several council at this point saying that this discussion has not been agendized, the planning board has no author, authority in this matter, and I need to come down on the process, because you guys are all at risk right now.
Okay, so I, 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 forgive me, Sabrina, but I'm not going to take legal counsel from somebody who's not an attorney. And if the, if we have attorneys who are serving the town in this regard, I think the planning board has a right to hear from them.
And, and then I would say that I would table this discussion when, when we can get an attorney to, to be here to advise you, I do not want to advise you legally, because it is out of.
You just did, you just did.
I understand it, but I, I'm, I am, I, I have to look out for process, though. Okay, and it, this was definitively not on your agenda, and I was advised by council that there's no authority here.
Well, let's talk about, let's talk generically, right, not about this project, let's talk about process. What in your mind needs to be put and noticed on an agenda? Why would this have to be a discussion about uh a distribution center? Which is not subject, as you said, which is not subject to our approval. Why do we have to notice agenda items? I don't think we do.
Because you are a public board with a specific purview as dictated to you through the town code. Listen, Clinton told me that, but what I am advising you was told to me by Clinton, okay? I feel very out of my jurisdiction, right, to. right, to, to continue this conversation regarding this, this matter. Um, y- y- you know, I, I don't know what else to tell you, Tom. I- i- in my mind, right? If this is, if, if it is appropriate for this board to be discussing, legal would advise me the subject matter that would be put on the agenda regarding this project. Okay, because this project is right now, is not something that falls under your jurisdiction as the planning board.
But, all right, we'll get into the legal discussion another time, I guess. Uh, I don't know who decides what is the agenda is within the legal purview. Are you suggesting that are there limits to? I can't discuss, we can't discuss things that we think are a, uh, impact on the development and the planning of the town. I think the state statutes say that that's our job.
Uh, but, but there's a difference between what the state statute says is your job and my, this is my understanding, okay? There's a difference between what state statute says is your job and the powers that are deemed to you from the town board.
So the town board, the town board powers are more restrictive than the state and everything we discuss, the town board says we have to notice?
Um, I, I can't answer that, Tom. Again, you're speaking about things that are not within my jurisdiction. I, what I would say, what I would say, listen, what I would say is that if you would like me to have Clinton present at your twelve-seven meeting to discuss the process of your authority, I can do that. Or I can even have, have Keenan Bean do that because it's not about a specific project.
But it is about this specific project.
Right.
Keenan Bean has an interest in this. They said that they needed to be recused.
Right, and, and
If, if we want to pretend it's not about this project, so the Keenan Bean can advise us, I guess we can do that, but that seems a little bit transparent to me. I think that, I think if we need legal counsel on this, and I, I, I'm more than happy to take it. If, uh, Clinton's our guy, then let's have Clinton.
I, I will, I will speak with the town administrator and make sure, uh, if you want it on your twelve-seven meeting, we can arrange to have the discussion on the twelve-seven meeting.
That's great. And, uh, just so that, uh, it's not just this, you're right, it's not just this uh, particular question. It's how the planning board moves forward because maybe I am misinformed, have been for years about what our authorities are and aren't, and when we have to notice and don't, and who controls our agenda and who doesn't. So it'd be
I wanted to add something on that. What I want to see on the agenda going forward is a new business item at the bottom. Any board I've ever been on, on earth always has the ability to, to take a comment from staff, from legal, from members, whatever it might be. So, I mean, I agree that, obviously, we're not going to start talking about stuff that has, that we should, we should not talk about, things that do not have, uh, we have no jurisdiction. But it seems to me that if we are talking about something that is not involving an application before us, um, but is still something of interest, whether it's administrative, whether it's process, whatever, we need to have that ability on every single one of our agendas. It just has to be. The town board does it. Any board I've ever been on, I've been on lots of boards in my life. We always have that available. And it's always up to the board to call that. It, it's not even up to the chair necessarily. Dick hasn't issued, he wants to raise it. I think we should be able to hear it now. If it's something that we feel that we best, as for example, my, my memo tonight, I think it's best that you put that off. We're not talking about it tonight. We're going to see it on December seventh. I, we do that. I think that's fine. But it's very, very important. I, I think we've been frustrated on some of the stuff and this is a different issue. The, the Mount Pleasant thing, obviously, we've looked at before and we've considered before and we've heard from Clinton, unfortunately, he's not here tonight. I just thought this would be a, a quick thing that we could just say, look, I think the, the bottom line was we were going to recommend that, that maybe we just get a note to, to the town board or ask the town board to send a note or, or as residents, we send a note to Mount Pleasant. But, um, um, you know, uh, it's, it's just members of, of, of the, uh, community. But anyway, you know, going forward, I, I think we just have to have a new business item. Uh, this board can call those kinds of things and will call those and we'll talk about new items if we need to going forward. It's just crazy. The stuff where I have to ask permission to put on something last at the end of the day is driving me nuts and it's inappropriate and wrong and I'm not standing for it.
So, I can just note for the record, um, that you and I discussed, I wasn't aware this was going to be on the agenda or I would have left the meeting. Also not aware if you're going to talk about something else after this, I've remained on. But I did turn off my camera and you to myself and has not participated in this and observed it as a general member of the public, if you will.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll, 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 we'll look at that then for the next time around. And, uh, I don't think we have anything else, I hope. So if not, is there a motion to, uh, close the meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 See you later. Thank you.